All right, welcome everyone to the Tuesday, May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four Tom Water City Council work session. And I see that all of the council members are here so we can dispense with roll call. Uh, first item on the agenda is uh, Community Human Services Program. Home repairs in the finance department, and so I believe it'll be Troy that'll be presenting this. So go ahead, Troy.
Thank you, Mayor, and let me just pull up the presentation and share my screen. Okay, should be able to see the presentation now?
Yes, we can.
Great. All right. Uh, good evening, everybody. So this is, it was an idea that came to us last fall by the council and uh, we included this in the um. Uh, budget amendment that we passed, that you passed last November. Um, and this is for a twenty five thousand dollar pilot program, uh, originally for mobile home repairs, uh, for Tom Water residents. Uh, we had some discussions, um, and a couple of meetings on this and um, we can't limit it to just home repairs, but um, but we, but we can. Excuse me, we can't limit it to just mobile home repairs, but it is for home repairs and um, as we discussed recently, it would be for low income residents. Uh, keeping in line with the state constitution on the, the limitation of uh, gifting of public funds. Um, and so uh, for tonight, we're just looking for a, a last little bit of guidance from the council on this and we will get this program moving. So um, and oh, and just add staff doesn't have um. A ton extra time to administer this program, but we do have some nonprofits uh, that would be great at administering this program. Um, so we did some research and uh, not surprisingly, we have two that you're probably both familiar with Habitat for Humanity and Rebuilding Together. Uh, these are both excellent organizations uh, that have local offices, local volunteers, uh, pretty similar requirements as far as um. Needing to, to own your home and be low income, current on your payments, and they follow the HUD guidelines for income eligibility. Um, some, some differences between them uh, for Habitat, there is um, kind of a matching piece to that. Um, and then there's also some sweat equity or volunteerism uh, required, whereas with rebuilding, there is not. Um, generally rebuilding focuses on smaller projects, but I learned through this that they can also do larger projects um, and um. Uh, Habitat generally focuses on larger projects, but they can also do smaller projects, so. Um, anyway, the, the staff suggestion for this, um, we're not asking for action tonight again, just guidance, but. Um, we, we already have a contract uh, for this type of work with rebuilding together through the uh, Community Human Services Program. And so uh, since there's no match and no volunteer labor required, we thought this would be um, a great way to go. Uh, it would just require a simple contract amendment that we would bring back to you and uh, for approval at a future council meeting.
Uh, Councilmember Dahlhoff, I see your hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just waiting for Troy to be done. I don't want to.
I am. Did I, sorry, I meant to stop.
I didn't mean to break your flow.
Nope, that was the last slide. You're good to go.
Um, the one, I love this idea, right? And council approved it. The discussion came in regarding senior protections, right? So I, I see the low income, what happened to seniors? I know there's a federal definition of seniors. Um, and this came about because of the need of seniors in manufactured home parks, right? And so what happened to seniors?
I may need help with that one. I can't remember if, if we can limit it to just seniors.
They are protected federal class.
Okay, I can circle back with um, with our city attorney on that offline and we could, we could go over.
I mean, I love the concept. When we met a, a little while ago. I was informed and I appreciate that background of, you know, the limitations of public funds, right? And so I appreciate that of opening it up because there are more in need besides just a manufactured home parks, right? And I appreciated that. The one element is the seniors, right? Because it's specific requests from our seniors and so. But I'm in full support and rebuilding together works well with Habitat for Humanity, so there could be an opportunity for them to work together because I know Habitat. Was thinking about starting a database of needs and rebuilding together of partnering and collaborating, so I think this is a perfect model and example of them as we move forward. Uh, potentially they can collaborate with requests that they're getting. So thank you, Troy. I appreciate the presentation.
Sure.
Uh, Councilmember Kathy, and then I'll go to Councilmember Jefferson.
Yeah, I just wanted to um, concur with what Councilmember Dahlhoff said and um. I agree that uh, you know, some of the lar- uh, smaller projects that rebuild together have been, have done. Have gone into some larger ones and they've been able to also uh, do those on, I've visited some of those some. Sites where they've worked and so forth. So I'm a wholeheartedly behind this and. Appreciate you, Troy, looking into this and coming up with these two organizations. I think they're both, they're both good. I like the fact that um, that we can use both of them and hopefully when they cross over that. Habitat can waive sweat equity for some of the seniors and um. That kind of thing. So good. Thank you for taking our request and making it real. Thanks, Troy.
My pleasure.
Councilmember Jefferson.
I'm unmuted now. Um, thanks, Troy. I agree with both council members. So can we ask rebuilding together? If they can make it specifically for seniors or a certain percent can go to seniors or. And a certain percent can go to uh, veterans because I was recently reading an article. Where they weren't fixing up a veteran's home, so. Is that a possibility?
I see Ca- I, I see Karen is online.
Yes, um, my understanding from the uh, budget amendment and approval was that this was intended for senior housing repairs. Um, and so at this point, that was the intention of staff is to move forward with a senior repair program. Um, and we're just looking for guidance this evening on um, which um, alternative to pursue, but it is definitely intended to be for low income seniors.
Perfect. Thank you, Karen.
Yes, thank you, Karen.
Any other questions? All right, so Troy, did you get your question answered? I think you were looking, were you looking for a specific organization, rebuilding together, Habitat?
That's, that was our suggestion was rebuilding together, and so we will, we will make, we will draft up the contract amendment and get that reviewed by staff and we'll bring that back. Uh, I guess one last um, piece of guidance from the council, would you like that to come back? At a future meeting on the consent agenda, or would you like us to, to have it as a presentation again?
Councilmember Dahlhoff.
I, I would like a presentation just because of the requests and the comments, and we're the only jurisdiction that has created. A budget line item for senior protection, so I think it is important to show how Tom Water is addressing. Needs that we're receiving, so I think it would be beneficial to take a few minutes to show what we're doing, because it's novel in our community.
Okay, you got it.
And then we can invite them to say a few words.
Great, thank you. Uh, anything, any other questions or comments? All right, I think Troy's got his um, guidance, so Troy will be also doing the next one. Which is a municipal finance two oh one, so I will go ahead and turn it back over to you, Troy.
Thank you, Mayor. Busy night for me tonight and whoops. Okay, there we go. So you should be able to see municipal finance two oh one up there on your screen.
Yep, we see it.
Perfect. Okay, so this is um, the third in a series of four educational series uh, that we're uh, putting on for you this year. Um, and this one's focused on debt. Um, this one is, is, we'll talk about kind of debt in a few different um. In a few different ways, but uh, the focus will be more on like, like on big projects, um, some big ones that we potentially have coming up, so. Um, the last time the city issued any really significant amount of debt was back in two thousand and eleven for the golf course. Um, which means that most, or at least many of the, the council members here tonight weren't uh, council members back at that time, and so. Uh, so some of us might not be familiar, but um, uh, we did uh, issue a smaller amount of debt in two thousand and nineteen with a fire apparatus. Uh, so, so I know some of you around for that, and then um, you know, in the, with all the other things we've done, the city's basically just been paying cash. Um, and not that there's anything wrong with that at all, but there's uh, can be advantages to debt as well, so we're going to talk about that. So as we go through this, um, think about uh, your own experience with debt. Uh, most of us have, have probably at one time or another had a mortgage. Or a car loan, or at least some credit card debt, uh, maybe student loans, and um, so a lot of this uh, for the city. You can, you can probably relate to in your personal life or a personal business or something like that. Uh, it's, it's, the concepts aren't. Too different, um, but with the city, it just gets, you know, a lot bigger dollars and, and a lot more complicated. Uh, so debt just at its essence is just borrowed money that needs to be paid back over time, and there's a principal and an interest component. And if you uh, need to borrow money in your personal life, you probably go to a bank to get a loan. Um, the city can also go to a bank in a, in a similar fashion. Um, but sometimes um, a lo- a bank can't go as high as we need to. If we have a really significant project like the Maintenance and Operations Center or a big water project. Um, there are uh, several other options available to the city, which um, are all good programs. There's some like the Public Works Trust Fund, or there's a Clean Water State Revolving Fund from Department of Ecology. Uh, those are uh, competitive programs that you apply for and um, uh, and have to be selected for. Um, and if you qualify, there, there are really great plans with great rates. Um, municipal bonds, or there's another one called the local program, those are non-competitive. Um, we reach out and go through a process with them. Um, and we're, we're limited by our statutory authority and by our ability to pay for whatever loan we're asking for. Well, with debt in general, there's debt that's considered good and debt that's considered not so good. Um, the city only takes on the good kind of debt, so that would be debt uh, that's thought of as something that either increases your net worth. Um, or helps you generate income in the future. Uh, so uh. Personal lives, you could look at that as like a home, maybe a vehicle or equipment. Uh, student loans are generally considered good debt because they uh. Can potentially increase your future income, um, or a loan for a small business. Uh, debt that's not considered good would be something that decreases your net worth or does not generate income like credit card debt and payday loans and. Uh, other high interest type of loans, and the city does not do those. And so there are some advantages and disadvantages to debt. The obvious disadvantage is uh, interest payments, and so compared to paying cash, you pay more uh, when you take on debt because you have to pay interest on the debt. Um, some people don't like seeing liability on the balance sheet, but for the city, we would have a corresponding asset uh. To, to offset that, so it's not a big deal for us. Um, some benefits um, to, to yourself possibly, or to the city. Uh, would be that you get to save some of your cash. Um, instead of uh, using all your saved cash uh, to purchase something or build something, you get to hang on to some of that. Um, it also keeps your reserves intact, which are important for an organization like us. Uh, hopefully, usually the city can lock in a pretty low interest rate when we uh, go out to finance something. Uh, if we happen to be in a high interest rate environment, when we go out for debt, uh, we usually have the ability to refinance if rates should drop down later. Um, allows us to buy now and pay later, and um, a concept we've talked about recently, and we're going to hit a couple of times in this presentation. Is that the future users of whatever it is that we're going to buy or build um, are going to help make the payments. Um, so that's, that's an advantage of paying over time. So you might ask, could we just save up for whatever it is, the, the building, the fire truck, whatever it is that we're going to buy? And the answer is yes, we could, and we've done that a lot lately. Um, the questions we need to ask ourselves related to that is uh, how long would it take? You know, if we're talking about a maintenance and operations center uh, that might be thirty plus million dollars, that might take us twenty or thirty years to save up for that. Um, what's, what's the timing? When do we need the, the building or the truck or the whatever it is that we want to buy or build? Um, if, if we need it in two to five years, that's probably not enough time to save up for something that big. Um, and then there's by waiting and saving up, um, there's uncertainties to go with that. So if we're going to buy something next year, we have. We don't know exactly where the economy is going to be, but we have an idea of where it's at now and where it might be in twelve months. Um, but if we're trying to forecast out twenty or thirty years, there's no way to, to accurately estimate what that's going to look like. Um, another um, potential pitfall of saving up to, to buy or build uh, something really big. Is uh, we could end up with too much cash, at least in some people's opinions, so that would take um, you know, some extra communication with constituents. Um, you might get people that look at our financial position, our financial statements. And say, my goodness, why are you raising my taxes and why are you increasing my rates when you've got all this money sitting in the bank? Um, so that can actually uh, look bad on us for collecting more money than we need. Um, and again, then that leads us kind of back to that concept of um, the future users that are going to benefit from that asset. Um, should be the ones helping to pay for it, and so if we saved up for twenty or thirty years, um, some of those people that helped save the money. May not see the benefit of it. They might move away or, or whatever happens, you know? Uh, but if they, uh, but if we finance it, that kind of fits nicely with um, them, the, the people benefiting from it, helping to make the debt payments. Uh, you might ask, is it bad to pay interest? And I mean, obviously, we all, I think we all like to save money and it would be not, it would be nice not to pay interest. But again, some things we need to consider along with that, so. Let's say we have a project that's going to cost thirty million dollars and we say, okay, well, we can save a million and a half a year for twenty years and then pay cash for it. Sounds great. Um, but we need to talk about how much would that same project cost in twenty years? Uh, between inflation and other cost escalations, um. By the time we save up that money in twenty years, that project might not be thirty million dollars anymore. It might be forty million dollars or fifty million dollars. And so then we're still left with a shortfall that we need to figure out. Uh, you know, and also the longer we wait to, if, if we have needs for our community, um. And we wait twenty or thirty years to fill those needs, uh, that kind of creates a void there too. And so we're going to transition a little bit to um, something called the matching principle. And I bring this up because this fits in really nicely with debt, so um. The matching principle is a fundamental concept in accrual accounting, which is what we do. Uh, that basically says that the revenues that are generated, revenues or could just be the benefit from an asset that we buy or build. Um, should be matched up with the corresponding expense. Uh, that helps ensure accurate financial reporting, gives you consistency between accounting periods, um, a lot of good benefits to that, and um. And that, uh, and so issuing debt kind of fits nicely in with that, where we're going to pay over time, so we're going to recognize the expense over a period of years. Uh, that will correspond with whatever revenue or other benefits that that generates for us. And so we'll walk through a quick example of that. Um, and this is a fictional project, so don't, don't get worried if anyone's watching. Um, uh, this, let's say, let's say Chuck comes to us in the next budget and says, uh, hey, council, we need a thirty million dollar driving range next year. And um, we want to pay cash for it, and we'll just imagine that we have the cash to pay for it. So if we treated that, if we didn't use the matching principle with that and uh, reported on cash basis. We would have a huge expense in year one and then no expenses for the next twenty nine years. Let's assume it's a thirty year useful life. And so really that makes our financial statements inaccurate. It creates this huge imbalance between revenues and expenses. Uh, we have a huge loss in one year and then uh, potentially massive profits in future years. And so um. Really what we want to do is, is match the revenue and expense. Um, that gives us accurate financial statements, better um. Lost my thought there. Um, better uh, uh, comparison from year to year. Um. Prof- you got accurate profit and loss statements. Uh, we can actually evaluate the performance of the asset, which is important, so. If we spent thirty million dollars on an asset and it's only generating a hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue. We're going to see that really easily uh, by spread, by matching those, those caught, the revenues and expenses out over the years. Um, and so the way we, we do our accounting, even if we didn't use debt for a project like that. Uh, even if we pay cash, we're still going to, to spread that cost out over the period of thirty years or so, whatever the useful life is. Uh, and match those revenues and expenses. So a little transition again to bonds, so for big projects. Um, we would typically use bond financing. Uh, so you've probably seen, seen or heard of the term geo-bonds, that stands for general obligation bonds. Uh, so these are bonds that a city issues. That are not connected to a specific revenue source, so things like an M and O shop, uh, a new park, a city hall. New city hall or city hall expansion, things like that could be uh, financed with general obligation bonds. Uh, on the other side of that is revenue bonds, and those are bonds that are tied to a specific revenue source, so a utility project. Uh, a big, you know, water storage tank and water main type of project. Uh, we could finance that with revenue bonds and that, that helps us. Um, again, it goes back to that example of. We're going to match the, the revenues uh, to the expenses and the future users are going to be the ones that, that outpay for that product, project. And we, we mentioned earlier and talked about a couple of weeks ago about how uh, some things in the state constitution that help guide us. Um, the state constitution guides us with debt as well, and there's RCWs in addition to this. Uh, but the, the constitution tells us that for non-voted uh, debt, we can issue up to one point five percent of our assessed value. Which for us works out to be about ninety three million dollars. Um, so non-voted also sometimes called councilmatic debt. Because it's, uh, doesn't need to go to a vote of the people, it just goes to a vote of the city council. Uh, if we want to go higher than that, we can go to a vote of the people. Um, so we, with, with a vote, we can go up two and a half percent. Um, there's, then in addition to that. There are special provisions um, for parks and open space, or we could do yet another two and a half percent. Um, or for utilities, an additional two and a half percent on top of that. And these um, yes, Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thanks, Troy. Do you have any examples of when and if we have done this?
Uh, the only example I have is um, from two thousand and eleven, we issued debt for the golf course. And I think that was, I wasn't around then, obviously, but um, I think that was for some um. I want to say maintenance and repairs, that might be the wrong word, but um, some. Some major work to the golf course. It was several million dollars. It wasn't, we weren't talking a thirty million dollar um, debt issuance. It was probably more like five. Um, and then uh, we paid that off in two thousand and twenty two.
Thanks, Troy.
Yeah. Um, and yes, I don't know. Um, I don't know when, like, when we built City Hall, we may have taken on, you know, a big um. Big debt issuance, but I'm not sure. Councilmember Kathy?
Here on mute.
Sorry about that. Um. So we would be, the council would be making a decision that would say up to ninety three million dollars. And then, and then this is a, what, what is it end up as a tax on?
So it, it depends on what it is. Um, so this, this um, presentation here is um, just educational. It's not, not. I'm, I'm bringing in some example projects, but it's not, this isn't a specific project that we're asking for anything tonight. Um, but yeah, that, that ninety three million dollars, um. Yeah, we do have things coming up like the Maintenance and Operations Center uh, that's estimated somewhere north of thirty million dollars. Um, that's. What's that?
I said way north. Yeah, that sounds what we started with years ago, and since then, this, that project's done nothing but go up. I, I guess my, my question is, I know we're not asking about a specific project, but we're asking what this is, is. Basically raising people's taxes, correct?
Not necessarily. So with, let's say with the, well, it depends on the project and how we structure it. We, we don't, just because we issue debt doesn't mean we have to raise taxes. Um, I, I assume when I do revenue projections uh, for the city as part of my job, I assume we're going to take that one percent property tax increase every single year. Um, it's, it's such a small increase, I, I think it would be um, unwise to not take it. Um, but we don't um. We don't, we don't necessarily need to raise taxes to issue debt. Um, it depends on if, if we've got enough revenue coming in, um, then we don't need to. Um, now if we did, you, you know, the slide that you can see right now. Um, if we were going to go to a vote of the people and ask for an additional two and a half percent of voted debt. Um, maybe that comes with a, with an increase, but I don't know, that would be very project specific. And Councilmember Althausen, oh, I'm sorry, did I answer your question?
Yes, you did. Say, thank you, Troy, yes.
Um, my question is, I, I guess I'm sort of curious at what level a project becomes bond eligible in terms of revenue? Like, we, we've talked, you know, as a community, both in Tom Water and then also potentially in Olympia about. Uh, like a public pool, and we've also been very clear in those conversations in the past that pools are. Are, are generally, you know, those are expenses. They're not like revenue. You're never going to pay for a hundred percent of it. But you can do events, your meets or other things, or commercial events to help offset some of those costs. So I guess I'm just curious, at what level does a project have to be revenue focused as its primary objective? In order to be able to bond off that potential revenue?
That, that is an excellent question, and I'm gonna, I'm going to tell you what I think I know, uh, with the caveat that maybe I don't know. Um, I, I think, I think if it was for a utility, I think when we, if we decided we wanted to go with, with revenue debt, revenue bond. Um, I think we would have to be able to demonstrate either through revenue we already collect or. Um, you know, data and, and maybe some projected numbers on how we think. The revenue coming in would be enough to pay for that, to repay the debt service. So with, say, the water utility. Um, I don't want to say that's easy, but it's, it's kind of easy. I mean, we've got, we've got a long history of collecting um, water utility fees. Um, it's not, it wouldn't be too hard for us or for a, a bond underwriter to say, okay, yeah, we think your population's going to increase this much. And therefore you're going to need this many new customers, and okay, yeah, that pencil's out. I think for something like a pool, that would be pretty hard to show that um, the revenue we would bring in would be enough to make the bond payment. Um, so for something like that, we, we'd probably have to go with either a general obligation bond or. Maybe there's some other special financing we could find for that.
Okay, and I have one, one other related question about revenue bonds. Um, when the state passed um, the bill that allowed locals to retain a portion of the sales tax for housing and homelessness services. I think it was a point one percent on the sales tax. That legislation specifically said that bonding was allowed. Now, we've, we've, don't collect really enough to do anything of large significance. Because for us, that's fifty or sixty thousand dollars a year or something like that, but. Or, is it possible, I, I guess, what I'm wondering is like, bonding essentially allows you to do something bigger. But i- is there sort of a metric of like, for every fifty thousand dollars of revenue, you can bond, you know, a. Five hundred thou- like, like, is there any type of metric that can be used for a rule of thumb to understand bonding capacity as it relates to revenue streams? For how big of an impact something like that could potentially make?
I don't, not that I'm aware of. Um, I think when, when we, if we want to issue general obligation bonds, even though. Let's say, I mean, right now we have, we basically have no debt, and so we've got our whole debt capacity to work with. But that doesn't mean that they're going to just necessarily allow us to, to issue the whole ninety three million. I mean, they might, but they're going to. but they're gonna, they're gonna do their due diligence, and they're gonna really dig into our financials and our reserves and our and our projected revenues and things like that. And so it's it's quite a process, takes, it takes several months to to get everything in line and um and so I think if they were looking at something, something just like that where it's a smaller revenue stream, I don't, I don't think that would be enough. I think they need to take the whole picture into account. Um, you know, really, really, they're looking at risk and what's the uh kinda like with your personal credit, like are you a good credit risk or bad credit risk? But then also, you know, they wanna know your income and things like that, so they know um is is it likely that you're going to successfully pay, make the debt payments on time and pay this off um? Or is it part, are there gonna be issues?
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful explanation.
Sure. Councilmember Agabi?
Yeah, so for the one percent um assessment value, is that based on current year or the previous year?
It's current year. So the, so the one percent, so when when that comes up again in the fall and we we choose whether or not to take the the one percent increase. It's basically the county, the county will come up um late summer, early fall, they'll come up with a a new assessed value. Um and it's, it would be for twenty twenty-four values, but it's, but they use that to assess the twenty twenty-five taxes.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so this next slide gonna show um kinda what a repayment s- schedule looks like. Um I made this up. This is, this is fictional data. Uh but again, kinda going with a thirty million dollar project, uh I don't know if you can see my mouse there, but thirty million dollars up here in the upper left, uh estimating five percent interest rate, uh paid back over twenty years. We'd make two payments a year. Uh that's pretty typical with the bond issuance. And so you can see down below um the dates, the beginning balance, uh the payments would be almost one point two million um e- every six months. Um and then over on the lower right, you've got the principal and interest and ending balance. And so that just keeps counting down until the loan is paid off, very similar to how your house payments would go. And then, this is actually the last slide I have for you. Um, just like you have a credit score in your personal life, um the city, if we, when we go to issue debt, would get kind of a credit. This is base, this would be basically something like what the cr- the city's credit score would look like, but instead of a number, it's letters. And um the city, uh when we had our last bond issuance, we had a standard and poor's double A rating. So that's up here in the upper portion of blue. It's a high grade, considered a high-grade investment um for people who buy municipal bonds and invest in them. Um and then as you can see, um as you get down lower, that indicates higher risk. You get into the junk bond territory down towards the bottom. You've probably heard of those. Uh so those are, those are four cities uh that that might be having financial trouble. They probably don't start that way. Um I I guess they could, but um it it probably starts with someone that's got got a better rating and then they run into trouble and they end up getting their rating downgraded over time um if they're having trouble. I know that happened to the city of Detroit a number of years back, where they actually declared bankruptcy for a time and had to restructure uh their debt and everything. Uh we're in no danger of that here. Um we are um again, high-grade, uh very good bond rating. Uh when they, when we paid off our bond in twenty twenty-two, uh they removed that bond rating. So currently, we technically don't have one, but uh we are in good financial shape. Our reserves are good, revenues are strong, so um I expect that uh when it's time to go out for for new debt, um that we would get uh a a double A rating again or possibly even higher. Um and I know we always kind of wonder about our neighbors and I I I wrote it down and I lost my post-it note, but I, as I recall, um I I believe our neighbors in Thurston County uh have a very, uh one had the same rating and I think the other one was really similar, so uh we're in good company there. And the, that was the last slide there. We stopped sharing real quick. And I can take any additional questions that you might have.
Any questions? That, thank you, Troy. That, I think that um was really good.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
All right. So the next item is the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan Implementation Update, and uh that'll be with water resources and sustainability and I'm not sure who is presenting that. Is it Alyssa? Are you doing that? Okay.
I am. Just a moment while I get my screen share going on. All right. Can everyone see my screen all right?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Uh good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm happy to update you on the progress of two plans tonight. First will be the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. Um this will give you an update on what Tom Water as a jurisdiction has accomplished in the year of twenty twenty-three, as well as some twenty twenty-four updates regarding regional initiatives that the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative is working on. Um, I tried to make these presentations um for tonight on the two plans as short as I could, so I separated them into their largest parts. Um so the first sector that we'll cover tonight is Buildings and Energy. Um in twenty twenty-three, Tom Water completed more LED lighting retrofits at city facilities. We launched an all-electric buildings webpage and information with rebate incentive information, especially from the Inflation Reduction Act. Um we achieved Seoul Smart designation, Silver designation, and we began a solar plus storage feasibility assessment for both City Hall and the library. In the transportation and land use sector, we began the periodic update of the comprehensive plan, which will include a climate change element, new element, brand-new chapter um for our jurisdiction. And we'll also be working on a bike and pedestrian plan that will be incorporated into both the climate element and the transportation element. The trans- uh Transportation Engineering Department completed preliminary engineering for traffic signal controller and detection upgrades. Um they continued construction of the three roundabouts that we all know about at Trossboro and Capital. Um they determined right-of-way extents for the X Street roundabouts. They began design for the Linwood Avenue sidewalk project. They secured safe routes for school grant funding for the Second Avenue Pedestrian and Bicycle Improvement Project. And multimodal improvements have been incorporated into each project wherever feasible and possible. Additionally, the Green Team completed an internal fleet electrification plan, which estimates the replacement of sixty-six vehicles with electric vehicles and creates a roadmap for fleet EV charging and gasoline consumption reduction. That uh information was then used to apply for a grant from Department of Commerce uh that will help us get ten new EV chargers for different uh city fleet facilities. And additionally, the city council approved the new state energy code uh very recently, which sets requirements for EV charging, EV-ready and EV-capable for new developments. And I see a hand.
Hi, thank, thank you. Um Alyssa, what I, what I wondered is, uh I had a question. It's been a little while back, but uh how the roundabouts and spending all this money on roundabouts and so on and so forth cuts down on the traffic? Or the use of cars or emissions or carbon and all the things that, you know, you'll, we all are interested in. Is it, so what would be your answer to that?
Yes, it is a, increasing the efficiency of transportation is a specific action in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, which lists roundabouts as being one of those uh efforts for increasing that efficiency. When vehicles are not stopping and idling, it improves the air quality around that area and uses less fuel, so in less keeping them from stopping and going and sitting and idling is better for the environment. Uh granted, not, no tailpipe emissions from vehicles is the best thing that we can have in terms of transportation for the environment, but roundabouts uh do improve our fossil-fueled car infrastructure um impacts.
Even though people go faster and use more fuel.
I go nice and slow through the roundabouts myself.
I know some, I I've noticed that, and one person who lives on Yelm Highway that has to put up with all that car racing along there says they've noticed some of those uh little Ricky racers um enjoying going around the roundabouts when they're not very crowded. And I'm like, oh my goodness. So might be something for the watch out for, but thanks for that. So I'll, I'll just, that's a very good and concise answer to, to give that keeps traffic moving, that that's one of our, one of the goals of the program. Good. Thank you.
Thank you. In terms of uh water and waste, um we completed our investment-grade audit of city facilities very recently. The investment-grade audit identified four point five million of uh efficiency retrofits and installations that could help the city operations reduce emissions by a hundred and fourteen point eight metric tons per year. Um we plan to request some of that funding um for those identified projects in the upcoming budget cycle. Um but we realized four point five million dollars is a lot at once, so um we'll be mindful about that. Um this work uh with the IGA will also, or investment-grade audit, I'll try to keep my uh acronyms to a minimum. Um it will help us meet the requirements of the Clean Building Performance Standard um set by the state, which will um if we get some of that work done soon, we'll be meeting and being in compliance with early for City Hall, which is the only building that we own that needs to meet those requirements. We also started three different compost-related initiatives in twenty twenty-three, composting at some city events, composting at city facilities, and incorporating the purchase of compost in certain capital and landscaping projects per our compost procurement ordinance. And I'm sorry, Councilmember Swarthout, I always use this picture. Um, thanks for being in it. Tom Water helped uh lead the charge. We've really did a lot to lead the charge um in terms of improving the proposed Washington Wildland Urban Interface Code um due in uh to lots of work from Brad and Allen Community Development. Uh additionally, in twenty twenty-three, we were working on three sections of code updates, which will, we will be restarting again in August of this year now that the whole Wildland Urban Interface um code has been clarified. We also received a grant from Department of Natural Resources to complete an inventory of trees on city properties, which uh was completed, and I'll share a lot more information about that in my next presentation. Um and Brad and Community Development also continued to work on the Habitat Conservation Plan. In terms of the cross-cutting sector, which is those sectors where things intersect or they just didn't really fit in any particular bucket, um we updated the sustainability webpage on the city's website. Previously, I had only talked about stuff that was completed in twenty thirteen and nothing since then. So we updated it, um preserved that history um in a little accordion thing, but then added more up-to-date information about what we're doing in terms of sustainability. We also hosted six interns from the Evergreen State College in twenty twenty-three who worked on various climate and urban forestry topics. And the picture here is from a tree board meeting where an intern that I actually had the pleasure of hosting for two different semesters, Amida Devarajon, um was presenting to the tree board about climate change impacts to the trees on our proposed street tree list. So that's Tom Water specific for twenty twenty-three, related to Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. There's more that we did, but those are the things that kind of fit within the buckets developed by the the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. And then there's the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative, so that's the four jurisdictions working together. And we have been working on two regional initiatives in twenty twenty-four. Um the first one, the one that I'm more involved in is the Home Energy Score Model Ordinance. And then there's also a Residential Energy Efficiency and Electrification Campaign. Um I'll talk first about the Home Energy Score Model Ordinance and then next about the Energy Efficiency Electrification Campaign. We hope to bring both of these initiatives to City Council towards the end of this year or in January, February uh for you all to consider. The Home Energy Score Model Ordinance uh initiative is drafting a model ordinance that would require um US Department of Energy home energy scores at the time of listing real estate. A home energy score is a standardized asset-based rating system for home efficiency that looks at um the structure of the home itself as opposed to occupant behavior. So instead of sharing a previous owner's electricity bill to give you a a idea of how much it might cost in terms of your energy burden to operate this home, uh this will tell you the cost of operating the home based on the insulation, the windows HVAC efficiency, those functional um pieces of the home that are not as easy to change as occupant behavior. This kind of ordinance has been passed in many other local governments, um especially also in the Pacific Northwest. Uh this program or ordinance as proposed um later on in the year, um would include subsidies for low and moderate income households to participate and gain the benefits of this program rather than create exceptions um for them, to bring them in so that everybody can get the benefit of knowing how efficient a home is when they're looking at purchasing a home, so that they have a good idea of what their energy burden might be. Right now, we're at step one of the Home Energy Score Model Ordinance work. We've developed a memo of policy concepts uh in the Thurston Climate Mitigation collaborative staff team recommendations, and we've brought those to the Community Advisory Work Group for feedback. And that Community Advisory Work Group is one of the three arms of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative. Um it's made up of fifteen or sixteen, I think it's fifteen um members of our community that have different lived experiences to provide um insight and um improve what it is that we're moving forward, make things better. Um, we're still working on consensus on two or three of those uh policy concepts with the Community Advisory Work Group, um but we're moving along and still um talking with them in a couple of weeks about those three remaining items. Councilmember um Kathy?
Thank you, Alyssa. Um I've asked this before when you're talking about the home energy um you know, models and what we're doing, how we're going about it, and how, I've forgotten what the conversation is around all of the different rentals that we have in Tom Water because some of our things are definitely um geared toward home owners and many time, and many times renters are not open to discussing this or allowing, you know, people to know what's going on because of landlord issues and so forth. How how does that fit in to the, to the goals that we have for, for this?
Yep. So there's a couple of different ways that we could approach it as it, it, as we're going to be suggesting it now. And then there's improvements that we can make soon in the future. So things that we can do to improve what I bring to you in January, February is if we use a website called Green Building Registry, tenants can look up and look at the um home energy score of whatever a building that they're living in, if it's the kind of building that home energy score can be applied to, um which is um attach a I'll say what they don't do right now. Home energy score does not apply to stacked multifamily and um manufactured homes right now. But something that we plan on expanding the program to, once Department of Energy expands the program, which they've told us they're going to um be adding those kinds of structures very soon, um then we could include those kinds of structures and talk about how to um do like a time of application um for renters that are leasing, but we wanna try to work with the the existing model to work that out, get that in place and get that um running and then make changes to it instead of midstream. Um so that each kind of chunk of it can be improved and build on one another. Um and everyone in the community can understand what home energy scores are, how you get to them, how they can be helpful, how they should inform decisions, how they connect with other programs, like the next um regional initiative I'm gonna share in a few minutes. Um so renters aren't included immediately, specifically yet, but we have a plan to include them.
And and these scores are on, are for single-story dwellings? I mean, they could be for duplexes or triplexes, but they can't be for two stories?
They can be for multiple stories, um like single-family duplexes, triplexes, townhouses, um but where the units um bottom and top are different, um that's where it's, it's hard right now for Department of Energy. They've said that they're going to release um the stacked multifamily and the manufactured home ability to score in the next couple of months. Um so we'll be trying to incorporate that as soon as we can. Um, there's been a lot of steam in the community um put behind moving this as it is kind of forward now and adding that once the, the ship is sailing smoothly, so to speak.
Well, that could be years, and there's certainly a lot of uh multifamily dwellings being uh being built everywhere in Thurston County. Um so one last question, just to clarify. So as a um as a, uh if you are a renter in a, in a single-family dwelling, this, this would apply and it would be the the landlord who follows through on, on things. That's the goal of this program.
If the home was recently listed for sale, they would have to have that information, which the tenant would then be able to access. So they would be So they would be able to know the home energy score of the property. However, there isn't a trigger point if to force someone to do anything if they aren't making a change. So that's the kind of the, I wish there was a better term than trigger point. When a home is listed for sale, that's when the requirement would be put in place. So if I owned a home for 10 years and I rented it out and I didn't list it for sale, I would not be required to get a home energy score for that property until I wanted to list it for sale. Not for leasing, but the moment that I did want to, I mean theoretically, this is still in development. The the models all throughout the United States for this. There are some at time of sale, but the Realtor community in Thurston County is not a fan of, they've communicated that they don't want this to be a time of sale to complicate what's already difficult in terms of the home buying process. And this, if we put it at the time of listing for sale, then that makes it so that it can be a bargaining chip when you're in negotiations for the home. You can compare like to like for this home is worth this much, this home is worth this much, but this one's much more efficient. I feel like I'm not answering your question.
So so you so a landowner, land person who owns the home doesn't have to do anything for it as long as they own it consistently for 10, 20, 30 years. So that that's why we have lack of energy efficiency in a lot of older homes. Is that correct? If they've been owned by the same person?
Also, the building code that the the homes were built to, you mentioned the all the new multifamily that's being put in place. As of a couple of weeks ago, they'll have to have heat pumps, they'll have to be highly efficient, they'll have to be solar-ready. So those ones will be built to be much more efficient than the existing homes that exist now. And a lot of those are single-family homes that are wildly inefficient, and this would help at least provide information for people to make better decisions and for the efficiency to be a bargaining chip in the home buying process.
Got you.
You can also get different loans with the Home Energy Score. There's a Washington State Housing Finance Corporation has a a special energy spark loan that you can use to finance some of the improvements along with your mortgage, and there's also a Fannie Mae energy-related home mortgage product that you can get to help you finance the improvements that would be identified in a Home Energy Score audit.
Well, it sounds like people are trying to help along the way, you know, change some things to kind of spur this efficiency. That's good.
And with the Inflation Reduction Act incentives, the state incentives, and some some new incentives that we might be funneling through local locally, there's never been a better time to have that information and be able to take action in terms of the financial ability and the amount of financing and and stuff that's available.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Good.
So our next step from the policy memo is to go to stakeholder engagement. City of Olympia will be holding that contract. They've done a competitive solicitation, and we've selected a consultant to do facilitation of six focus groups. That'll be with different stakeholders. And then after the Community Advisory Work Group, the policy memo, the focus groups will draft a model ordinance. We'll be getting feedback all throughout stakeholders, Community Advisory Work Group, and public, and I'll be coming back to City Council for at least one work session before I propose this, of course, to get your feedback as well, and probably also planning commission. The second regional initiative being worked on now is the Residential Energy Efficiency and Electrification Campaign. This is a multi-pronged approach. We've already completed step one, which is the web-based information hub of launching wa.switcheson.org, which is a website that Thurston County, Olympia, Pierce County, Tacoma, and Seattle, and King County all financed for the benefit of all Washington residents, especially in the counties that are participating, to get information on how to electrify your home, what are contractors that are actually doing this kind of work that did, and they've signed electrification pledges, so it helps dwindle down kind of the massive amount of information for a big, big life change or a big expense for homeowners or renters. We hope to also provide an advisory support service to help residents navigate that process of electrifying equipment in their homes. That would be like a hotline you could call and ask, can you help me compare quotes for heat pumps? I got to, I don't know if it's apples-to-apples kind of thing. How do I go forward with getting the tax credit, that kind of thing? Energy Concierge is what it's also called in some communities. We will be promoting home electrification, and hopefully we'll be able to supplement those federal and utility incentives and even offer turnkey installations for low-income or low to moderate-income homeowners. There's some state funding available for up to 150% AMI to be able to replace heating, electrical panels, ovens, and stoves, and hot water heaters. And that could be completely turnkey. We we would have a contractor go in, do that for income-qualified homeowners, and improve improve their lives, much like the senior program that you all have been talking about, and perhaps these can even talk to one another, where if those low-income seniors need new heating, and we could incorporate this into that, too. I've been informed that we have gotten an award of more than $400,000 for funding in Tumwater to support this program. More information will be available after the granting agency makes a formal announcement later this week, so I can't say where the what the funding is about, but I can say that we will have 400 plus $400,000 to help provide these incentives and turnkey installations for low and moderate homeowners in our community to electrify their homes. We're also doing other things that intersect with climate change that aren't distinct actions or strategies in the TCMP. This is just a really short list of that, but we continue to support the Tumwater Tree Board. We added rechargeable battery and device recycling to clean-up drop-off events, so now we're accepting those lithium and NiCad batteries and sending them to recycling, because the the best mine for electric vehicles and all these lithium clean energy solutions is in junk drawers. It's from recycling existing products, so we wanted to be part of that. We also improved our CDP score, which is Climate Disclosure Project. We were a C last year, now we got a B in 2023. We gave away 100 plants and 100 seed packets at Arbor Day, and we passed an internal environmental purchasing requirement. And now I'm happy to answer any more questions that you might have about the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan implementation, and I will have a whole nother presentation here after Q and A for this one on the Urban Forestry Management Plan. Thank you.
Any questions? Councilwoman Dahlhoff?
Thank you, Mayor. Alyssa, great presentation, and I love all the things that you're juggling. One of the things that has been coming up in discussion regarding procurement and contract language is how do you shift cultures and shift purchasing, not just removing toxics from products, but like carbon-neutral furniture, greenhouse gases? Is there discussion moving forward of how to do like preferences for manufacturers, distributors to do products that deal with the carbon footprint as well?
Not explicitly as of yet. That's not to say that we aren't going to add things in the future. The environmental purchasing policy that we have right now kind of phases now and then after 2025, because we can't anticipate if some of those products might cost more, so we wanted to make sure that that was in line with the new budget requests, so that if things did cost more, that we would phase it in at the right time. And I would not say that it would be, it would be reasonable for Green Team to look at it again, to see if there's an additional phasing that we can do in the future. We are looking at the toxics, like you mentioned, supporting local as much as possible, because shipping is a huge part of the the carbon footprint of different products, extended producer responsibility for different products, especially electronics. So to some extent, yes, but not as much as I would dream of. We're trying to make sure that we can do what we can do with the the resources that we have and but still push for more.
Thanks, Alyssa. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Swarthard?
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alyssa, for the presentation. It's a nice reminder for what we have accomplished. Sometimes it feels like we're just not moving fast enough, but it is a reminder. And then how much work has been done by the jurisdictions via the fact that we hired you, and so the we have environmental sustainability people in place. So I don't, I can't remember if we asked, I asked you this question the other day. So looking at trying to, you know, the potential of going with a heat pump, we have like battery recycling for that type of waste, but how, what do you do with the, what do you do with your old stove and your old? How do they recycle old furnaces and stoves and things like that if we're going to be taking that step? Is that included in the website for people to look at?
That's a great question, and I know what we should do for refrigerants. Those are highly regulated and should be, because some of them have 4,000 times the global warming potential of carbon dioxide. I know that we bring things, bulk waste goes to Hazle House and the local solid waste, but beyond that, in terms of exact replacement, like I would suggest if people want secondhand stoves, if you're putting in a new induction stove that you bring it to Habitat for Humanity or a store similar to that, and donate whatever is still available to try to squeeze some more life out of it if you can, but it's perpetuating them. It's still perpetuating the, yeah.
Yeah, we're not closing the loop, so, but I appreciate that. Yeah, I just am curious. You know, because, you know, people like, oh, we'll just keep it until it breaks, you know, and so and you know, that might be and won't be within that, like we're trying to achieve our goals by 2030, so I'm just curious about that, how you can, for those of us who feel guilty, what do we do? Can we melt it down? Is there a way to recycle these these kinds of things that we're putting back out into our waste?
It's my assumption that we could break it down into different recyclable parts, and some would maybe not be able to be recycled, depending on the market and the demand for that, but that's something that I'm going to look into. Thank you for for bringing that up.
Any other questions? Great. With that, we're going to move now to the Urban Forestry Management Plan Implementation Update, and Alyssa will be presenting this also. Joan, did you have a question first?
Yeah, could I go back just a second and and ask Alyssa a question? You know, I I love it that you're having interns. That that is really a big, big part of what I've always enjoyed and pushed, no matter which field I was in, you know, bring people in. And I was wondering if along the way you could have, we could work something out where they could come to a work session or or council, and we could know who they are, and maybe you could spread it out, so they could be telling us about different areas like you talked about tonight, you know, where they work in specific areas you assign them to, and then we could be hearing about that as it's going on, and it's and encourage them that we're paying attention and listening and grateful for their their time.
I think that's a great idea, and I'm actually attending. So all of my interns so far have been from the Center for Climate Action and Sustainability at Evergreen. And actually, tomorrow, the Center for Climate Action and Sustainability is holding their kind of like recap of their work. So I don't know if I if I have the power to invite people, but they are having that tomorrow at Evergreen in the afternoon to go over the students' progress and the different projects that they've done. I can say that I had Amida did, they were wonderful. The the climate change Street Tree List was their first project with me, and then over the summer, they did surveys and interviews and and learned how to do grounded theory qualitative research, talking to our highest residential water consumers about why it is that they use so much water in a very kind way, but kind of learning, investigating why, so that we can better communicate to the why they're making those decisions, instead of just saying, you can save money on your bill. Let's get at the root cause here, and it was a really fascinating project that I really enjoyed doing with them.
Ah, yeah. I'm glad they didn't come to my house. I mean, I'd like to meet them, but not because I use too much water. And then one other question that I have is why has it been so difficult and so years that predate you that we can't have the city do composting, or we do the city, City Hall recycles, correct?
Yes.
But it doesn't compost?
We do now.
We do now?
Yep. As of 2023, April, it was, we started at Earth Month of 2023. We have green buckets all throughout City Hall and all of the city facilities, to best of my knowledge. We have, we are not doing the process of composting ourselves. We are bringing it, LeMay is picking it up for their yard and food waste, but we've been doing that practice for more than a year now pretty successfully. I've gotten maybe one kind of like it smells comment, but otherwise contamination's been low, and it's been a good success, and we've been able to divert some waste in that regard.
Good job. We talked about just recycling for years, and then now the the composting was, you know, wonderful. I'm glad I asked that question. Hurrah. You deserve an award for that.
I'll just take the compost. No, for projects, of course, for the city.
Good. Great. Thanks for that, and thanks, Mayor, for letting me go backwards to ask a question.
Oh, yeah, no problem. All right, now we will move on to the Urban Forestry Management Plan Implementation Update, and Alyssa will do this presentation also.
And I will warn you, this one's a tad bit longer than the last one, because I'm going to get into the implementation of the plan, but then also a really cool project that we accomplished this year that did seven actions at once. So I'll try to be quick. I think it's only going to take about 15 minutes, but this one's exciting. All right, Urban Forestry Management Plan Implementation Update and Inventory and Maintenance Plan. So two different sections of this presentation. First, I'll start with the Urban Forestry Management Plan Implementation, and similar to what I did with the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, kind of breaking it into its larger chunks to, there's more than 70 actions in either of these plans, so I didn't want to go through and bore you with a Excel sheet on a on a screen, so I will share that I'm happy to share that of all the actions that are scheduled to be worked on now in the Urban Forestry Management Plan, 80% are either on track or in progress. Only 20% of actions are delayed, and that's normally just because like we need to finish the codes before I can do all the things that happen after the codes, like update the website and what whatnot. The agenda packet includes detailed action reporting for every action scheduled to be happening now, so if you have a specific action that you are most interested in, I recommend looking at that Excel sheet, which I provided to the tree board back in December. We go over this with the tree board every year, normally November, December. And they suggested that I bring this to you all, so thank you, Tree Board, for encouraging this. Urban Forestry Management Plan is separated into five separate concepts. The first one is Grow. Under the Grow concept, we are working on those revisions and updates to three sections of code that pertain to trees. That's the street trees, tree and vegetation protection, and landscaping. Those, again, like I said in the last presentation, will officially kick back off in August. That will be a joint meeting of the tree board and the planning commission. We completed an evaluation of the size and diversity of trees on city-owned properties. We've had multiple meetings of the tree board with stormwater staff. That's, there's a number of different actions about creating a relationship between stormwater and the tree board, and we even did a field trip, looking at potential stormwater sites to plant. The tree board did an initial review of non-regulatory programs and incentives to grow the canopy. Pictured here is Arbor Day Celebration from this year at Historical Park just a few weeks ago. It was the first time, the tree board told me this, it was the first time they ran out of plants before the event was over. Normally, there's plants left over, and they scramble and try to find homes for them. We were gone, they were all gone within an hour before the the event was finished, so that was great. The next concept of the Urban Forestry Management Plan is Protect. In February, Transportation and Engineering, Water Resources and Sustainability, and Parks Operations Staff attended a four-hour Principles of Urban Forestry Training provided by DNR staff for free. The training not only provided a lot of important information, but it also helped identify ways in which our tree work had been siloed and could benefit from more interdepartmental communication. The tree board also reviewed non-regulatory programs and incentives to protect existing canopy, so one is for growing, one is for protecting existing, both are necessary. In 2023, we launched our Heritage Tree Story Map, and we completed a tree inventory of city properties to help identify tree trimming needs based on the actual needs and priority. Manage is our next concept in the Urban Forestry Management Plan. The inventory I keep mentioning also included a maintenance plan to help prioritize plan and schedule and estimate the costs of tree maintenance on city properties. One Parks person is pursuing their ISA arborist certification, and three transportation, engineering, and water resources and sustainability staff have shown interest in wanting to pursue that accreditation as well. The one arborist that we, certified arborist that we had on staff retired just a month or two ago from Parks, and I'm glad that some of the staff want to pick up the mantle and and do that accreditation and get that under their belt. Both staff and the tree board work to distribute resources to residents and business owners on proper tree care, no topping, how to trim, how to plant, how to fertilize, things like that. As part of our tree code updates, we're also taking a closer look at Um, as part of our tree code updates, we're also uh, taking a closer look at our approved street tree list. Um, to take into account lessons learned from other jurisdictions, lesson learned from our own mistakes, or things we didn't know, and now we know better. Um, information from Department of Natural Resources, on-the-ground information from operations crews, and best available science on climate change impacts on the different tree species and their ability to adapt to different shocks and stressors over time. Staff is working to integrate the tree inventory data with our work order systems. Uh, to recognize the trees as natural assets of our asset management system, and also keep that data updated and reliable. And we also estimated the value of the ecosystem services provided by the city-owned forest, which I will get into in much more detail soon. The next concept is Fund, and we now have more accurate cost estimates for the funding needed to maintain trees on city properties, and we will be requesting that funding in the coming budget. Um, it's likely not going to come from my department, but others. So that we can make sure that we have the, the money that we need to take care of the trees so they can be healthy. Um, Water Resources and Sustainability is working on establishing a nexus between stormwater and urban forestry because they do interact, and we will have some new stormwater permit requirements regarding tree canopy, so there's a nexus and an ability to maybe link some funds there to support urban forestry. Uh, the city was also awarded a grant from the US Forest Service to help pay for an urban forester full-time employee, starting in twenty twenty-five. So this valuable work can be managed by an expert in the field. I love trees, but I am not a tree expert. I'm doing my best with this plan. And our urban forest, um, in my opinion, um, deserves someone who has more expertise in trees than I do. And I'm happy that we got some funding for that, um, and I'll definitely get touch more on that uh, towards the end of this presentation. The last concept of the Urban Forestry Management Plan is Engage. Um, one example is this picture from Fall Fest. Um, of a community member playing our Carbon Jenga game. That teaches participants a simplified carbon cycle and allows the opportunity to discuss roles of carbon sinks, including forests and other ecosystems. Play in our global um, carbon cycle. We engage volunteers for the Inventory and Maintenance Plan Project. We participated in Thurston Climate Action Team's Tree Group most of this year. And we retained Tree City USA for the twenty-eighth year in a row. Um, and the Tree Board meets very, very, very regularly, and uh, we have lots of communication, um, of course, following all open meeting um, guidelines. Um, throughout the month as well, in between meetings. So now I'm going to shift gears to speak a little bit about a project that was completed this year, our Tree Inventory and Maintenance Plan. This project was funded by a forty thousand dollar grant from Department of Natural Resources and twenty thousand dollars from our city tree fund. The Tree Inventory and Maintenance Plan contains each of these sections. I'll briefly touch on each and give you highlights. Sets our tree inventory, which is made up of two different data sets. One is street trees. That data was collected in twenty eighteen. During the development of the Urban Forestry Management Plan. Then we also got new data on city-owned properties that weren't the street trees. We uh, did an analysis of the tree inventory, uh, got an assessment of the replacement value of environmental benefits, uh, pests and pathogens. Tree maintenance needs, tree maintenance cost, and a priority planting analysis. Our consultant for the project, Davy Resource Group, completed a tree inventory of all city-owned properties, with the exception of the golf course. They didn't want to get pelted in the head with golf balls while they were counting all the trees, so they explicitly left it out of their proposal. But I think some is better than none. Um, we had existing street tree inventory data from twenty eighteen. And those data um, were updated to reflect any tree removals that were done between twenty eighteen and now. A lot of that data was collected by volunteers and um. Definitely needs to be updated, but we didn't have the budget to update it as part of this project, except for where trees were removed and making sure that that data was accurate for us. Large forested areas like Sap Road Park, Trosper Lake Natural Area, were inventoried using a sample-based approach as opposed to tree by tree. Um, because, again, available funds. However, all other city properties had each tree assessed and inventoried. The green dots on the left-hand map. Are the new inventory data and the gray dots are the older street tree data. Um, the table on the right shows those natural areas that were used for um, sample-based approach. And I have a picture of an example of that random sample-based approach for Trosper Lake Park, so they randomly selected. Areas had a certain uh, space circumference that they were working on to do uh, in-depth. Inventory within those randomly selected areas. So our most, uh, the tree inventory showed that the most prevalent species on city properties are uh, Norway maple, calorie pear, and red maple. A Tree Board member recently told me that Norway maple and calorie pear, either in Washington or Oregon, are on the watch list for noxious weeds, so. Um, just something to think about. They're not there yet, um, but they are persistent and sturdy trees, and because of that, they're persistent and sturdy. In the natural environment, most prevalent species are big-leaf maple, Douglas fir, alder, red alder, and uh, western red cedar. The Urban Forestry Management Plan and this report both emphasize how the diversity of species and age is really important for the health of the forest. The report suggests that we should reduce our reliance on maples, um, as a genera, and to promote greater resilience um, for our community and urban forest as a whole. Also, the pie charts on the right show the condition of trees in our city-owned forest. Um, so you can see for our inventoried trees, so those are trees on like, historical parks, city hall, library, places like that. Um, they're mostly in very good condition. Um, and in natural areas, we have a bit more that are in fair condition, but um, generally doing okay. Yes, um, I see a, a raised hand.
Uh, thank you. I wasn't sure if you wanted questions before or after, but when I'm looking at the, the preponderance of Norway maple and the calorie pear. Are those because they, those were the tree of choice when um, when uh, these developments were developing, so these larger ones, is that? Is that where they come from?
They were on the street tree. They may still be on the approved street tree list. And yes, that's, a lot of those are from development that were coming from our list.
Landscaping, that, yeah, okay. And we are coming up with a plan where are the right tree at the right place, right?
Yes.
I read into that later. It's later in the report, I realize. Okay, thank you.
So the current replacement value of Tumwater's inventory tree resource, so again, those are trees on our properties. Um, is nearly eleven point nine million. That's. That figure accounts for the historical investments over time on the trees that are on our properties. That is not the same thing as ecosystem service value, which I will discuss next. All right. I'm super nerdy about ecosystem services, so I'm going to try really hard to rein it in here. Um, not all ecosystem services can be counted or monetized, but some can easily, using a tool from the US Forest Service called iTree. Um, this looks at the specific trees, uh, where they are in proximity to building, the size that they are. All sorts of different inputs and calculates some of the values of ecosystem services for a handful of things. Um, air pollution, sequestering carbon, storing carbon, stormwater interception mostly. So here I have two, um, because there's two sample bases here, so the inventoried trees. Um, the inventoried trees in, that are on Tumwater-owned properties, um, intercept more than two thousand pounds of air pollutants every year. They sequester twenty-six point seven tons of carbon every year. They contribute to the avoidance of more than eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand gallons of stormwater every year. And to date, not annually, they are storing um. One thousand seven hundred and eighty-five metric tons of carbon dioxide. Um, there are um. Many cultural ecosystem services that you cannot put a dollar figure on, um, how we feel when we look at a tree. How we feel with the trees over us, how we feel just knowing trees are there, uh, art, all these different things that you can't put a dollar figure on, but we have some dollar figures because those are helpful. Um, in terms of natural area trees, so those um, properties that were too big for us to count every single tree with the money that we had available. Um, we are intercepting more than eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-three pounds of air pollutants. We have, we are sequestering one hundred and fifty-nine point four tons. Of carbon each year. To date, not annually, they have stored more than uh, three thousand six hundred and thirty-one point two metric tons of, of carbon, and again, the cultural ecosystem services are priceless. I see a hand.
Thanks, Alyssa. The one thing I'm just wondering, as we move forward, is there a way to see a demo of iTree? Like, could you put in a specific tree? And this is not specifically for you, because I know your background is not specifically in trees, but how does identifying these metrics. Align with like, risk assessment, right? The dollar value. How do those two come in to be compared?
So there are different iTree tools, one for individual trees, which um, I've used for grant reports in the past. Um, that it's very simple to use. Anyone can, can kind of explore trees in their own yard. And the ecosystem services values from that. In terms of risk, uh, doesn't really help, um. Unless it's like, public health risk, if you are losing a, a forest, or you're going to get like. Less than a dollar probably per tree. Um, in terms of that, that's one surprising output of, of, of this stuff. We are actually, I, I know that this is a topic that council has been talking a lot about in terms of um, how to. Incorporate ecosystem service values into decision-making, especially for land use change, and um. My team and I here, Water Resources and Sustainability, have started discussing that, and we actually, we had a meeting last month to start talking about it. We were too swamped, so actually tomorrow. Uh, at eleven, we're going to start talking about that in more depth to be able to um, work on something that um, city council and staff can operationalize. Um, because it's more than, iTree helps with trees, but there are many different assets, um, natural assets in our community that provide ecosystem services that aren't trees. And some of those are tremendously useful um, for our environment.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to the big-leaf maple, which is the star of our city-owned forest system. Uh, in terms of ecosystem service value, they are working the hardest for us out of all species that we have on city properties. They are contributing the most atmospheric carbon removal, uh, removing air pollutants, uh, avoided runoff, and they give us. Even though they're huge, beautiful trees, a whopping almost eighteen dollars of value per tree, um, on an annual basis. The project also assessed a city-owned forest for susceptibility to forty-four emerging and existing pests and pathogens, like the Emerald Ash Borer pictured here, which is now found in. Northern Oregon, and I hope it never crosses over here, but it, it, it's likely. Um, ninety-five percent of our inventoried trees are susceptible to at least one of those forty-four emerging and existing pests and pathogens. There are multiple tables in the report, if you, if you want to read all about that, of the different pests and what um, trees and how much of our forest. And that's on city properties are susceptible to those. The consulting Arborist spent an average of five minutes assessing each individual tree for those areas where they were looking at every single tree. This is a screenshot from our Treekeeper. Um, system that we have through this um, project. They collected data about the tree species, the health, the maintenance needs, and defects. This screenshot here identifies a Pacific dogwood, dogwood at Barcliff Park that has some broken limbs, is in fair condition, and needs to be pruned and deadwood removed, for example. You could click on any of these green dots and get all of that information. You could run reports. Um, on how many trees are priority one removal, how many need small tree pruning, how many need limbs raised, how many need deadwood. So we can pull this information really easily to help guide our work. And that could be four different maintenance needs, or what are all the things that need to be done at Barcliff Park? Give me a, a sheet of, okay, this tree here needs this, that tree there needs that, so that we can direct work. Based on the inventory and prevailing wages, there is about three point four million dollars of needed tree maintenance work on city properties. Only eight percent of this is currently removals, so um, a lot of the trees are healthy and uh, just need a little love uh, to continue being healthy. Um, the Urban Forestry Management Plan suggests a four-year maintenance cycle for our urban and community forest, uh, so the three point four million dollars. Total cost breaks down to an estimated need of eight hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Every year for the next four years to get on track for the deferred maintenance that we have in our urban and community forest that's just on city properties. Here's a table that breaks down that information a little bit more. Um, this is using the, the. Cost of the consultant's time. Um, Davy Resource Group was the consultant for this project. They also do tree work, so they were using their hourly, which is the going rate. All right, the next couple slides are maps that are really hard to see um, on a screen, but I wanted to make sure you saw them anyway. Um, we also work to identify priority planting areas as part of this project, um, since one of those concepts for the Urban Forestry Management Plan is Grow. We wanted to know where would our community be best served by planting more trees. This map here is areas uh, for prioritized planting based on stormwater benefits that we could have from where we're planting the trees. The map on the left is private land, and the map on the right is city-owned properties. I, now, again, sorry, these maps. In GIS, I can scroll in and, and get better, but um, I wanted to make sure that you saw the whole extent of the city for both of those, so. They're not very useful in this setting, but I wanted you to know that we were looking at this, and we're also looking at priority planting areas based on urban heat island effect data that we have. Um, again, private on the left, city-owned on the right. We also have priority planting areas based on environmental health disparity data that's collected and distributed by the Department of Health. Private on the left and city-owned on the right. And then the last one that we have in terms of these priority planting areas um, or maps. This one is based on a number of census data points on social equity, income, unemployment, so on and so forth. Um, private properties on the left, city-owned on the right. One last thing that I wanted to touch on, um, before I wrapped up this particular presentation, is the US Forest Service grant that we were awarded as a city. That funding provides fifty percent of the funding needed to hire a full-time urban forester for three years. Uh, this also provides one hundred percent of the funding for the rest of the things I'm going to rattle off here. Um, installing ambient air temperature monitoring throughout the city. Expanding and improving our tree giveaway program. Um, to have it be more focused for tree canopy equity, or those potential planting areas that we were just looking at, because there's a reason why I have the private. We want to see the areas that the community would be most benefited by in terms of us giving. Trees and the supportive materials like compost watering bags, um, soil mulch, things of that nature. Um, also, uh, twenty-five uh, tree health assessments per year for residents in Tumwater disadvantaged communities, and I will define that in just a moment. Um, so a lot of times I understand people remove trees in their yards because they're afraid of them. Um, they're big, they're heavy, they're scary, um, but with the right information, you can make good decisions. And hopefully by providing um, this resource to members of the community. They can find out if those trees are a hazard or if they're not, um, instead of maybe going the route that we don't want them to in illegally cutting down a tree outside of the tree removal permit process, so. Hopefully, with more information comes better decisions is the concept behind this. Also, street tree trimming subsidy for residents of Tumwater disadvantaged communities, for residents that are responsible for the trees adjacent to their property, but if they can't afford to actually trim them. But we have deferred maintenance and we need to make sure that people can still traverse our streets we work and still get through, people can still walk on the sidewalk without getting bonked on the head. Um, having kind of a small grant program for disadvantaged members of our community to get that assistance for the street trees adjacent to their property. And I know I said disadvantaged communities of Tumwater a lot, and um, for this grant. We had to use federal tools only, and this is the one that encompassed the most of Tumwater that we could get. This is um, EPA Inflation Reduction Act disadvantaged communities definition. Um, which you can see runs the center, the orange, the orange area is what's considered a disadvantaged community, according to the federal government for the application of this loan, of this um. Grant. Um, our match for the. All of the programs would be funded one hundred percent by this grant, but fifty percent of the urban forester's time. Uh, is all that would be funded by the grant because they want to make sure that this urban forester is focusing on disadvantaged communities, so. We have some blue areas of the city. We still want this work to be able to be done professionally all throughout the city, so that would be a match from the, from the. City budget, um, hopefully, to make it possible for us to get this urban forester position for at least three years. That would be uh, about sixty-one thousand five hundred and three dollars per year, each year for three years, and then we would have a full-time urban forester to implement all of those, those programs as well. And I know that was a lot. I will move on to questions and stop sharing my screen, um, and thank you.
Any questions? Councilmember Von Holtz.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alyssa. I know that a lot of work has been, gone into this, and some of it came before me when I was on the Planning Commission. Working with the Tree Board, so, um, this is really great, but I'd be remiss if I didn't, um. Address the juxtaposition of us celebrating this urban forestry, um. The, the work while the plan is to cut down a four-hundred-year-old tree, so I just want to address that because I can see how our constituents. Might feel a little bit undermined, um, hearing all of this with the decision that has been made, but I do know how much work has gone into this, and I really do appreciate it.
Councilmember Sora.
Oh, thank you, Alyssa, on that. Um, I was curious of, uh, a reminder of where people can find out information about the trees. Uh, because it's not underwater and sustainability. I was just curious where um, that link is to um, our information on trees for those who are listening. And those who don't know.
We have some information about trees um, on Community Development's part of our website and some on the Water Resources and Sustainability part. Some of those actions that are delayed is like updating the website to be reflective of the new code changes that we hope to move forward this year. So I will admit I've been not changing the website until I have the new information to put there. Because the street tree list is still the same until we, until the city council decides to amend the code as proposed. There's not a lot of new information to put there at the time. This inventory and maintenance report is very focused on internal operations. It's available in a Tree Board meeting packet, but if if it's desired to have that available on the website, I could do that as well. So there's some information and more coming once we've made a little bit more progress so that there would be more detailed, useful information.
Councilmember Dohle.
Thank you, Mayor. Alyssa, on that one slide where you said you can click on a tree and see the info, is that, was that iTree or Treekeeper?
It's Treekeeper.
And then do we have access to that?
I can add an unlimited number of people to it to get the the access. If any council member would like access, you can let me know and I can add your email to it. And I'll give you read-only access, but you can get all of the information that's available there. You can go to the website, the Treekeeper website, without an account, and you can click on the trees, but you're not going to get like the maintenance recommendations and whatnot. You'll get a limited amount of information.
That would be great. And then going back to the table, the 27-page table regarding the manage portion. A lot of this stuff is ongoing. It's C-manage, I think, 4.1D, as you're scrolling across. And it talked about review, tree preservation, landscaping and street tree regulations regulate to ensure that they are working with other priorities, right? And it said it's ongoing. How would we, how would council ask for an update, say of a specific tree, of where that is is ongoing regarding preservation, maintenance? And mitigation?
About a particular tree?
Like, say, a 400-year-old tree?
That would be staff information from whichever department is managing that tree, since parks manage some and transportation and engineering manage others. I believe all the information on the assessments of the Davis Meeker Gary Oak has have been provided. I don't have any additional. And the data that's in Treekeeper from that one, because it's a street tree, is old. It's 2018 data, so it's not up to date. Until we can update that part of the inventory as well.
Thank you. And one last question. In that table of protect B to 2.1K, it says no trees were planted in 2023. Why is that?
We were working on getting those priority planting areas figured out. There were live stakes, willow planted, but that wasn't necessarily through my program. It was through Grant Gilmore from my department doing restoration work in wetlands. Not sure if when do you call a tree a tree? Is it like an acorn? Is it a willow stake that a beaver stole right after it was planted? Like the, it's we're working on it, and we've identified some areas to plant trees, and we've just been kind of wrapped up in trying to find the right place and get the right conditions so that the tree can survive or the trees can survive. Other community members have definitely planted trees. I know that former councilmember Schneider planted a lot of trees on city properties, but again, that wasn't counted as like staff's work towards planting trees, so.
One other question or thought is, I know council has received feedback, for instance, from Planning Commission that they enjoy and like the joint meetings. Is there an opportunity to have actually a joint meeting with the Tree Board? Because a lot of stuff is coming up and there's a current issue. What does that look like moving forward for council and the Tree Board? Could we have a joint meeting with them to build that rapport and that relationship? I forget how to answer it, but like parking lot item.
Yeah, I was gonna say I would defer to the city administrator or the mayor for that, but I think it's within their their purpose. They're meant to advise the city council on tree-related issues.
Thank you, Alyssa. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Kathy.
Alyssa, I love all this talking about trees. Just and how important it is. And I just read again in some papers, I'd say how how many doctors or psychologists or whatever are writing on their prescription pads, spend at least two hours a week walking among trees, going to a, going to a park that is treed or being around some of these places that we have in Tumwater that are so important to our community. And thanks to hiring you, it looks like we're going to have them more and a lot longer. So I appreciate your work. I have a question. So so you as a group decided which trees within the city you were going to look at to use as examples, like all of that that you did in Barcliff Park? Or that you did along certain routes and roads and things like that? How did you get assessments of of these, to know so much about these trees?
We hired certified arborists with the grant funding and the tree fund funding to go inventory all of the trees on city properties. If you all want to give me a moment to pull up the website, I can show you a little bit more of the.
I'm just curious how how the Meeker Oak tree was not assessed. It's on city property and it's a historic tree and it's in need of maintenance and loving care and all the things you're you're doing or advocating for and how it was missed on city property.
All street trees were not included in this particular inventory because there was pre-existing inventory data from 2018. And we only had enough money to add to the inventory, not necessarily update every single bit. That's not to say that in the future, I don't intend on having interns go and update, especially interns that are well-versed in like risk assessments. They're probably not going to be tree risk assessment certified or qualified, but they can do their best effort to look at at different condition ratings and the things that would trigger classification for such. No, yeah, no, street trees were included in the in-depth inventory as part of this project because there was pre-existing data and we only had limited funds. So we wanted to get the rest of the city trees included in the data so that we could kind of one step forward, depending on the funding that was made available.
So so you in in these trees that you did look at or you plan to look at in the future, are you are you going to be looking not just quote risk assessment, but maintenance, you know, how they've been cared for, what what it is they need, you know, like the ground around them and, you know, feeding and care of them. And is that gonna, I know that's huge to say for as many trees as we have, but is that going to become a priority? There's, I think that's some of what, I think that's some of what causes some trees to look or act risk assessed, you know?
The trees that were included in the inventory for this project, so those ones on city properties that weren't our street trees on right-of-way, they all got those assessments in terms of what kind of maintenance is needed. If they have any primary defects, which could be, is there a bacterial disease that's at the root? Is there something that we need to do about that? That's something that we did with another Gary Oak in city property just last year, the the beautiful, large one that's out in front of Walmart, that recently also became a heritage tree. In the process of it becoming a heritage tree, we, because Kevin went out there and did an assessment and let us know, is this tree healthy? What's the approximate age? Confirm the species, the things that he normally does for any heritage tree nomination. And he alerted us to the fact that it needed trimming and it needed some soil removed from its base because it was getting a particular fungal disease. And then Transportation and Engineering was informed of that. They got contractors to do it right away, and Kevin supervised the removal of the dirt around the base of the tree to make sure that we weren't harming any roots also. And that's an example of us learning about the maintenance that's needed. That was triggered by someone wanting to honor this particular tree, which made us do an assessment. Granted, all the trees that have been assessed for the the tree inventory project here have had at least five minutes of of arborist undivided detention, so we have some base level for all of that, but.
I wish the Meeker Oak had had the same kind of thing. I spent a few nights around that other oak tree because I was, yeah, anyway, that was another one that was doomed to go down in construction or, you know, be disturbed enough to to bother it. So some of us stood around the yellow tape of that one, so. I'm just really so happy you're here and and doing this and can talk to us this way and we can understand it, whether trees are our thing or not. It's it's our thing as a city and it's our thing as a state. I mean, this is who we are. And I think this has to do with the whole health of the nation, and we need things like this to to be grateful for and happy about, especially now. So thank you. I think you're, I think you're, you personally are doing a great job and I'm happy for these.
I'm just implementing the plan that you all adopted.
We've been jumping up and down about it for quite a while. Eileen knows that. So this will be. Thank you. Anyway, so I I'm just, yeah, asking how it how it happened or how we can go moving forward.
I intend in the future to try to secure some funding to improve the street tree data that we have so that 100% of everything is accurate because with the volunteers for the street tree data, all I could get, and this happened in the winter, was for them to have information on their cell phone to walk with a piece of paper and say, oh, this tree's not here anymore. And then they check that one off. We removed it from the inventory, and that's the the most updating that we were able to do with the volunteers that were walking in the rainy December when they're looking at the bare leaf trees. So better timing and more money, we can get better information to make informed decisions.
Yeah, sounds like the stagecoach era. I know they were in their cars.
Oh, they were walking.
Oh, yeah.
Councilmember Swarthup.
Oh, thank you. I have one more question. As far as funding the urban forester, you said we we have a grant that'll fund it for 50, 50% for three years. So we'll, so that's all part of our upcoming budget process as well as it will be responsible for the other 50%. Is that correct?
Yes, I'll be putting in a budget request to my director when that time comes for for that additional 50% of the staffing, and that's their salary and benefits for those three years, 50% of that.
Cool. And I was probably, when we did the street inventory before, I just, all we did was like kind of guess them. We had to measure around the trunks and then try to figure out how tall they were. So as far as their condition, I don't remember having to do that part. So, yeah.
That's best done by an ISA-certified arborist. It is a profession, a legitimate profession with lots of expertise and information and standards around it. The data is better when it's collected by experts, but we do have a specific action in the Urban Forestry Management Plan to involve volunteers and inventories. So a mix of the two, and we get different quality data, but and we try to do the best with what we can get. But I'm glad you were part of that process.
Right. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Alyssa. This is really great information and very beneficial, so.
Thank you.
More information to come in the future. All right. So with that, we are moving on to Mayor City Administrator Report. City Administrator Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, good evening. I have a couple of updates for you. I wanted to alert you and the community that your 2023 water quality report is going to be coming out in the mail very soon. It is going out to about 15,000 households. And it reports on the city's work in 2023 in terms of water quality. The good news this year is we are using 30% recycled paper for the first time, and we've saved about $2,500 on our printing costs by virtue of finding a good printer to use to be able to help help us with this report. It's a true collaboration between Water Resources and Sustainability and the Communications Department, and I'm really grateful for all the work of our staff to get that done. There's new pictures, new graphics. So hopefully you will find it helpful and informative this next year. And then I just wanted to update you about a lot of different activities that are happening very quick, very soon here. Summer is a very busy time of year for the city of Tumwater. Two things that are happening tomorrow night. One, you would have received an email from the Parks Department. We're having a TYP appreciation dinner tomorrow night from 6:30 to 8:30 at Old Town Center. And as councilmembers, you are all invited. We just ask that you let Josh know that you'd like to attend, and if you're having trouble finding that email, please let me know and we'll forward it on to you. Also, tomorrow night, the Community Development Department is hosting an open house here at City Hall from 7:00 to 9:00. That is primarily to share information and take comments regarding the comp plan updates, specifically the housing element. Next, there are a couple of fun things coming up at the next couple of Saturdays that our Parks and Recreation staff are going to be sponsoring. We've got, excuse me, National Trails Day is June 1st, and from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Tumwater Hill Park. The Parks and Rec Department has got a fun day planned. They're going to take a leisurely stroll through the three-quarter mile long trail. You can learn about Tumwaters and the state's trail systems. They're going to organize a scavenger hunt and and some quizzes, and there's also going to be some trash bags available if people like to participate in a little bit of cleaning. So that's a fun activity. And then also on June 8th, Saturday, June 8th, of course, is Dog Days. So that's from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Pioneer Park. And that is, I believe this is the second or third year that we've done this event, and it's really been well-attended and everybody's super excited about Dog Days coming up on June 8th. And I don't have anything else?
Sorry, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Von Hulz for covering at the Memorial Day. I was at the Capitol for two events there, and it's kind of hard to clone yourself to be at two different places at the same time. So I appreciate you taking that on. And so it was a very busy weekend, and with that, I don't have anything else. We will be having our council meeting, a next council meeting next week on June 4th. So you will be seeing the agenda for that coming out shortly. So.
And Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's for you or for City Administrator Parks, but I'm just wondering if the city has yet gone out and taken down the sign that had an untruth on it, that the about delisting of the Meeker Oak that was listed on the sign.
That sign, Councilmember Kathy, was taken down today. It was not intended to be a misstatement. It was a public notice that had outlived its purpose in terms of providing notice of a meeting that was occurring. So it was taken down.
Oh, the thing was originally for the meeting of the Historic Commission?
Yes, it was a, it was a land use action, public notice sign that goes up anywhere there's a a potential action being being considered by the city. So it was a land use notice, and it was a public notice of the Historic Preservation Commission meetings.
Well, I'm sure as you well know by now, and I feel the same way. I I think it was wrong to put delisting on there before the before a meeting for that purpose or for to discuss that purpose. And I think egg on the face that, you know, they ended up unanimously wanting to maintain the listing. So thank you for taking it down. I'm, I think that's so that's, that's good because it was really confusing to some people to read that.
Yeah, I apologize for the confusion. Again, the purpose of the notice was that the Historic Preservation Commission was considering a request to delist. And the the sign was put up in order to allow people to know that that was happening so that they could attend if they chose. And it just, it stayed up past their time, their their meeting timeline. So apologies for the confusion, but it was intended initially to provide notice of that that process.
Yeah, I I understand. The other thing I wanted to ask is, will there be any other chance to discuss this situation with the tree or get an update or for the public to weigh in anymore at any time? I mean, this is far from a settled issue in our community or even an understood issue. And I think as we've learned, it's And I think as we've learned, it's better to get out ahead of these things than to let them overtake us.
Yes, I, I guess I would answer that in two ways. One, there is a legal proceeding that we're now following. So we will be respectful of that process and we will participate accordingly. The council will be updated in an appropriate fashion, whether that's an executive session or some other manner. That, I will leave that to the city attorney to, to recommend the process for that update. And then secondly, we are talking about trying to have a community outreach process that would include how we can commemorate and honor the history of the tree moving forward. And we intend to follow through with that, that commitment and that process. When the time is appropriate, given the legal proceedings that are currently underway.
Well, I, I would say that meeting's a bit down the road. As we discovered with the first try with the meeting, a lot of people aren't willing to talk about making picture frames yet. So, so the answer to, to my question for the people who are listening and is that, yes, we as council will be, will be getting some updates and this, the cycle, like you're saying, of the legal, legal part of it is, needs to run its course before there's any more conversation from the community. And that talking about how to commemorate it would be the only, would there be an open time to just talk about it again without this calling together of people to commemorate it? Possibly.
Yeah, so a public comment from, we encourage public comment from anyone and anybody who would like to provide public comment at any point in time. That is something that we always take and always have the option for doing, for considering. There isn't a current plan right now to have anything, any other meeting or conversation about the tree outside of the legal process and outside of, nor outside of the community outreach process that we currently are anticipating moving forward with after the legal proceedings are resolved. That's, that's current. That's now. That's my answer today. If something changes with regard to the legal proceedings, I can answer what would happen in that case. That's, we would deal with that when it came up.
Thank you, Alyssa.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Dohle?
Thank you, Mayor. Minister Perks, I appreciate that clarification. The one question I had is I received a question from a constituent regarding a joint meeting they had heard about for Parks Historic Preservation and Tree Board, and I was not aware of that meeting. And then the mayor sent an email canceling that. So I'm assumed it was canceled because of the legal proceedings. And then I'm wondering, moving forward, when will council be updated if there's another joint meeting? Because I had no idea that the meeting had been set for this Thursday.
We, we actually had discussed it, I believe, and we had discussed the process and I believe we had clarified the date in the presentation that we did on earlier in the month. I don't think it was the last meeting, but I believe it was the work session before. So we did talk about the joint process. We had originally sent the email out to the Historic Preservation Commission, the Tree Board and the Parks and Recreation Commission, announcing the meeting. We were going to follow that up with announcements of the meeting coming up. But because of the legal proceedings, we didn't get to that point. So yes, that is the process moving forward. Yes, the council will be notified of that. And part of the strategy is to allow for an opportunity for that group, that group of different subject matter experts that advise the city council on different matters to come together and provide a platform for people to provide input. And then for them to evaluate that and to talk about that and to come up with their own ideas. And ultimately, whether it's in the form of budget requests or requested actions, those types of things, that that would obviously come to the city council or any final decision about.
Thank you. Thank you. One other question I received is if someone, if the Davis Meeker Gary Oak tree was made a heritage tree on top of, in addition to being a historical, on the historical registry site, that wouldn't change the, the action that's being performed or decided by the executive branch of government, correct? Because of the exemption being used?
Yes, that's correct. It is, it is a heritage tree. And, and, and the code that the city has in, I apologize, the code number is chapter 16.8. It is section .075. That specifically addresses heritage trees, how they're listed, what happens to them, what you're required to do with them. There's a specific exemption for hazard trees not to have to go through a permit, permit process for removal.
And that's what we talked about the last council session when Kelly added it and you walked us through that process. That's really going back to that is that exemption section.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, with that, I will say that we are adjourned at 7:56. So thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.